Twenty eight of the Baltimore County Planning Board. This meeting is now called to order. I'm Scott Phillips and I'm the Chairman of the Board, and we will begin our meeting with a roll call. Mr. Schweitzer. Ms. Panero. Mr. Halapka.
Here.
Ms. Halford.
Present.
Ms. Burzens. Ms. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Present.
Mr. Hurst.
Here.
Mr. Perlow.
Here.
Mr. Baer. Okay, we have a slight problem. We do not have a quorum. We're going to ask folks to hang in there for a moment before we begin our meeting. If we don't end up with a quorum, I will move the agenda around and we will hopefully end up with a quorum so that we can move through those items which require action. Miles, are you aware of persons who are not on the call that have indicated they would be on the call in our meeting?
Yes, Mr. Schweitzer and Mr. Warren have indicated they would be here. I believe Mr. Warren's trying to get in at the moment, so he should be here soon.
Mr. McGinnis, hi Scott, this is Jennifer Nugent. Mr. McGinnis is on here too.
Oh, Mr. McGinnis.
Yeah. He's showing us here, but his microphone is off.
All right. Mr. McGinnis, if you could take us off mute.
Okay, I'm here.
There you go, show your camera. There you go, okay. We actually do have a quorum. Very good. If you would, then you join me as a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands.
Which stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. All right. Everyone has a copy of today's agenda. Mr. Milburger, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda as distributed?
No, Mr. Chairman, the agenda is as published.
Very good. All right, everyone, in your June 11th email, you received draft minutes of the May 21st, 2020 meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes? Yes, all right. Are there any additions, corrections to the minutes? This was an important set of minutes, folks, so just let me know whether there are any additions or corrections. All right? If not, the Chair will entertain a motion.
A motion to approve minutes?
To approve. And who was that seconded by?
Hartman, second.
Mr. Hartman, second. Any questions? Not hearing any? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed, same right, motion passes, and the minutes are adopted.
Mr. Chair, this is Jeff Mahew. Can you do a roll call because we've had some members join in since you took your initial attendance?
Sure, we'll go back over and do the roll call again. Let the record reflect that we are updating the attendance at 4:07 PM. Mr. Schweitzer. Mr. Schweitzer. Ms. Panero. Mr. Hartman.
Present.
Okay, updated. Mr. Halapka is present, Ms. Halford was present, Ms. Burzens. Ms. Wilson was present, Mr. McGinnis is present, Mr. Heckman is present, Mr. Heinold. Mr. Herbst was present, Mr. Perlow was present, Mr. Warren. Okay, let the record reflect, we're adding Mr. Hartman. I just messed up my own notes. Ms. Burzens, is that right? No, Ms. Burzens is... I added three people. Mr. Warren.
Yep.
Oh, Mr. Hartman, got it, okay. All right, so we've added them to the individuals who are present for the meeting.
Thank you.
The first item on our agenda today is the introduction and vote of the 2019 Annual Growth Report. Ms. Kua Zhao from the Department of Planning is here to present on this subject matter this evening. After Ms. Zhao has finished for motion to adopt the 2019 Annual Growth Report, a copy of the report was emailed to you on June 15th. Is Michelle on mute? We cannot hear her.
Miles, can you check the attendees? Sometimes she has to call in via the phone.
She did raise her hand and indicated that no one could hear her. She said something in the chat.
Seems no one can hear me, that's what she said.
Miles, did she come in as a attendee or as a panelist?
She is a panelist, and so she should have access to speak. We're trying to see if she's possibly called in as an attendee.
Mr. Chair, while we're waiting, I see Mr. Schweitzer has joined.
Thank you. Mr. Schweitzer, to be present, please.
Thank you.
And I see, Ms. Zhao, it looks like she is on a... she's calling in from a device.
She's going to try and call back in to see if that will help with the problem.
Okay, let's do this while she is doing that. We're going to move to item number two on the agenda, and that's the Cycle 38 Water Supply and Sewer Master Plan Amendments. We have Ms. Erin McKenna Strel from the Department of Public Works to present Cycle 38 Water Supply and Sewer Master Plan Amendments. After Ms. McKenna Strel has finished her introduction, I will call for a separate motion to set a public hearing on the subject matter. Please join me in welcoming Ms. McKenna Strel. I've said it three different ways, I'm going to get the last name right, Ms. McKenna.
No worries. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm here to introduce the cycle amendments for 2020, and that's cycle year 38. I don't have a whole lot to say just because it's the introduction, but I'm going to go over the three amendments that we did receive this year briefly. Miles, you can go to the next slide. So here's the map indicating the different areas where we have received the amendments from, and we had one in Lutherville Timonium, one in Perry Hall, and one in Randalls Town. And Miles, you can go to the next slide. The first one is 20-01, and that's 9871 Bel Air Road, that's in Perry Hall, Maryland. This one is completely inside the Erdle and inside the Metropolitan District, and it consists of three different parcels. The existing is W1 and W5. They're not requesting any changes for W1, just the W5 portion and S5 portions of the master plan, and they want to request W3 and S3. And Miles, you can go to the next one. Next one, 20-02, is 10116 Liberty Road, and that's in Randalls Town, Maryland. This one is a little interesting. It is inside and outside of the Erdle. It cuts right through the property, and it is outside of the Metropolitan District boundary, but we believe the existing wall of the building is within the 150-foot margin, but that would have to be confirmed with a survey. You know, on GIS, we just can't get that accurate looking at it from our perspective. The petitioner is requesting W7, and, I'm sorry, the existing designations are W7, S7, and they're requesting W3, S3. And you can go to the next one, Miles. Left is 20-03, and that's 1400 West Seminary Avenue. This one's in Lutherville Timonium, Maryland. This one is inside and outside of the Erdle and inside the Metropolitan District boundary. They're only requesting a change for the portion inside of the Erdle, and that's why you can see the shape for the designation is only part of the parcel. There's two parcels making up this request. Their existing is W7, S7, and they're requesting W3, S3. And Miles should have sent you all a copy of the staff report to review, and then we would like to request a hearing for next month to go over and hear comments from the Board and members of the public.
Very good. All right, well, the staff has requested that the Board set a hearing. Any questions of staff before we accept the motion?
I'd like to know what is proposed for the less than one acre on Liberty Road.
They're... you mean the designations, the W3 and S3 that they're requesting? Or what they're proposing to do with the property?
I'd like to know what they're proposing to do with the property.
In their petition, they just said for future development, but we didn't receive any other information about what type of development.
So they're not offering anything to substantiate their request, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. We have plenty of opportunity, Ms. Wilson, to continue your questioning during the hearing.
Thank you.
Very good. Is there a motion?
Yes, there is. Be it moved that a public hearing be set for Thursday, July 16th, 2020, at 5:00 PM regarding the Water and Sewer Plan Amendment Cycle 38.
You've heard the motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Warren, so that was Ms. Halford and Mr. Warren. All right, any questions? Not hearing any? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Have the same right? Not hearing any? Motion carries. We've set a hearing for July the 16th. Thank you. Now, we're going to go back to...
Thank you.
Thank you, all right. We're going to go back to the first item on our agenda, the 2019 Baltimore County Annual Growth Report. I'm assuming we have Ms. Zhao on the line, and she's ready. Well, the item that we're going to address now is the 2019 Annual Growth Report. As I mentioned earlier, Ms. Zhao is here to present the report, and following her presentation, we will call for a vote to adopt the report. Ms. Zhao. Did we lose you again?
Miles and Jeff see she's trying to get in?
We... I thought she was in, I saw her muted, and now her... she's in, but her sound does not appear to be on.
Hello?
There we go, very good.
Hello?
That's weak to you.
Oh, okay, hi. Hi, sorry about the technical problem. Hi, good afternoon, Planning Board members, this is Kua Zhao, I work for Planning Department, and I'm here to present the Annual Growth Report. Next, Miles? Miles? Thank you. The sections, 1-207 and Section 1-208, under Title 10 of the Maryland Local Government Article, which is concerning certain annual reporting requirements, states that on or before July 1st of each year, a planning commission shall prepare, adopt, and file an annual report for the previous calendar year with the legislative body. The report summarizes residential and non-residential development in Baltimore County in calendar year 2019, and analyzes whether the new development is consistent with the county's growth management policies as outlined in Master Plan 2020. Generally speaking, 90% or more residential or non-residential development approved in 2019 was inside the urban rural demarcation line, or Erdle, in Baltimore County. This bears true for new construction for housing or non-residential uses as well. In 2019, 26 development plans with a residential component were approved totaling 666, 63 units, among them, nearly 96% were inside the Erdle. In 2019, 1,397 units were built. Among those total units built in new construction, 89.6% were within the Erdle, for the more single-family structures representing 68.4% of the total units, which is, the number is 1,397. Next. In 2019, there are 33 development plans for non-residential uses that they were approved in the calendar year 2019. Among the total square feet of the approved non-residential development, 99.5 were inside the Erdle. The limited exemption for mixed-use development project outside the Erdle was to propose a storage building with existing office and greenhouse off Dogwood Road. Approximately 99.6% of non-residential uses in new construction or inside the Erdle in 2019. Percentage-wise, 99.5% are retail, 100% are industrial, 100% are office, and 90% are institutional uses. They were all inside... the percentage that I just read, they were all inside Erdle in terms of square footage. For the institutional use outside Erdle, it was the construction of a school building in Kingswell. Next. In 2019, 27 legislative bills and 10 resolutions were adopted. They were pertaining to planning on zoning matters, and there are some highlights... those legislative bills and resolutions were tools for implementing the county's Master Plan 2020 to ensure that development activities are in concert with the goals and objectives of the Master Plan 2020, as well as the Maryland, the state's smart growth principles. There are some highlights on this slide, like, for example, the development impact, surcharges and fees, allowing assisted living facilities by right in a business local or BL zone, prohibiting discrimination against a person in rental sale and so on and so forth, based on the income, the source of income, and those three are listed on their adopted bills. The three highlights under adopted resolutions are like amendment to the Perry Hall Community Plan to rank five rural legacy area plan applications submitted to the state, and the last one is to examine how communities in other areas of the county and other jurisdictions treat conversion of commercial space with the condominium or apartment-style buildings into residential uses. Next, please. In 2019, six sustainable community application renewals were approved by the State Department of Housing and Community Development, including Cadenceville-Potabsco area, Greeter-Donalds, Beres Point, Hulandale, Parkville, Hourley area, Pulaski Highway redevelopment area, Restherstown Main Street, and Towson area. Next, please. The school facility, according to the county's executive budget message, in 2019, the county has been building 18 schools, schools including new constructions or replacements and nine additions to eliminate current overcrowding conditions. Next, please. The Department of Public Works indicated that there are no deficiencies in public water status known to exist in 2019. The department has monitored and closed sanitary sewer airflow of Bagley Avenue, B-A-G-L-E-Y Avenue, in Parkville in 2019, and all of the remaining sewer relief point locations are being metered by the Department of Public Works. Next, actually, this slide has four images. So, the first, yeah, thank you. There are nine S-level intersections or Level of Service F intersections, and one E-level intersection in the 2019 Basic Service Transportation Map. And commuter sheds for those intersections were unchanged from the 2018 Basic Service Map for transportation. A Level of Service or LOSF means that no building or grading permits will be issued, albeit approval of a development plan unless allowed by the Administrative Law Judge at a special hearing. In 20... next. Yeah, that's an example, one of the examples of Level of Service F or LOSF, which is in Towson, at the intersection of Berkeley and...
Berkeley.
Not Berkeley, not Berkeley, in Towson, near where the Starbucks is located. In 2019, next, Miles, in 2019, 38 road projects were constructed or extended totaling 5.61 miles inland. Approximately 77% or 4.3 miles were constructed within the Erdle. Among newly constructed or extended road segments in mileage within the Erdle, about 36% were in the middle river redevelopment area, 13 in Hellsworth, 13% in Hells... and another 13% in Parkville, approximately 8% in Hunt Valley, and another remaining 8% in the Owens Mills growth area. Next, and this is kind of the arrow image that shows one of the newly constructed roads in that... yeah, that's in the Owens Mills area. In 2019, 1,076 acres were added to the preserved land in Baltimore County, yielding 67,051 acres total. The total preserved land accounted for nearly 84% of 80,000 acres, which are the Master Plan 2020 goal. And on the left, it is a bar graph, and on the right is the preserved land map, including the newly added acreages in 2019 and also total for the entire county, I mean, in the total acreages in the preserved lands in Baltimore County. And this is the... yeah, next, please. I would like to acknowledge my production team for this Annual Growth Report for calendar year 2019, and not only the team in the Planning Department, but also two colleagues in the Department of Public Works. Thank you all for your dedication and contributions and insights. And this is the end of the presentation for 2019 Annual Report on Growth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zhao. Are there any questions, Ms. Zhao?
Hey, Scott, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
One, the previous slide that showed the map with the preserved land, I know that there's restrictions on land all around our reservoirs, but I don't see any of those areas marked off. So nothing around Lock Raven, Pretty Boy, Liberty? Should they be included? I mean, how is that taken into account?
That's a good question. Can anyone answer that question from the staff?
Hi, this is Jeff. The land, most of the land around the reservoirs is owned outright by Baltimore City. There are a few parcels owned by either the state or Baltimore County that complement that. That is not what we're measuring in terms of preservation. The goal for 80,000 acres talks... focuses on what we are doing either through outright purchases of land or development rights, or land that we're picking up through the development process that's set aside. We could add that land to this map, and I think it would fill in some of the big holes, but we don't keep track of that as preserved.
That was my thought when I first looked at the map. It looked like, oh, there are these... and then I realized that I know that there are buffers around all of the reservoirs. So I understand your point from the county's land preservation goal, but I think having something on the map that helps indicate that there's other land that's also off limits for development.
Because the reservoirs also provide water, not only Baltimore County, Baltimore City and the surrounding jurisdictions, there's cooperative agreements on how the land is to be protected. There's a group, and I can't recall... Um, there's a group, and I can't recall their name, that operates out of the Baltimore Metropolitan Council that focuses on how that land, how the stewardship of that land, um, functions so that it protects the water supply.
Yeah, that was my understanding that there's, you know, that, because it looks on the map, it looks like the land is open for development right up to the reservoirs. I know that that's not the case.
That's, that's a fair, um, observation, Mr. Hello. To now for the annual report, there is some prescription as to what we are to show, right, Jeff?
Yeah. So that the, the amount of acreage at what we're required to report is the amount of acreage that we've preserved in calendar year two thousand and nineteen.
Okay.
Um, I think what we can do, um, in next year's report, we may modify this map, um, to indicate the land that's surrounded that area so it doesn't look like there's two, three gaping holes there. Um, if we just add another color scheme that's not, uh, that indicates that land, but not included in the acreage total, I think would be helpful.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure. Sure, can.
Can I have a second question?
Go right ahead.
Can I go ahead, Scott?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay, um, in the discussion about the number of, of new housing units, I didn't see anything that told, that indicates how many total units we already have. You know, I looked up in the American Community Survey, and it says we have a little over three hundred thousand housing, you know, occupied housing units in Baltimore County right now. So, you know, my, my sort of back of the envelope, um, estimates were that if you took, you know, the, the buildings that were raised and what was built, you know, we, we've added less than, less than half of one percent of housing to our housing stock. And I just think it would be useful to sort of have that as a context because a thousand units sounds like a lot of units, but when you got over three hundred thousand units to start with, it really isn't that much. And in fact, given that we know that household sizes are, are been constantly declining for decades, the decline in, in household size isn't compensated for by the increase in housing. So the concerns about, oh, our population is decreasing is in fact because of this mismatch between the declining household sizes and not building a lot more new housing that balances that out. Am I correct in that?
Part of, Que, if you would go to the previous slide, I think part of what you're saying when you talk about household size, um, the number of developments that are getting approved now are predominantly multifamily, which is addressing that market of the smaller household size. And, um, I'll call it the shrinking elderly side and the, the, the younger side that's not having as many, uh, children. Um, so I think that's where I would point to is how that is being addressed. Um, your, your point about the ratio between existing and new, I think is valid.
And that, that would be my follow-on question, and it was a question from last year was, how many of the units are simple family homes, not townhomes that were built? And then a better understanding, it looks like we built seventeen hundred units, but we only approved six hundred and thirty-three unit. So what is the supply left? Built?
That's a good question. So how many, we have, uh, six hundred and sixty-three units from last year and had some number that were not built the previous year that were approved in the previous year. There's a rolling total. How many plans are approved that have not been acted upon?
But had to have some, because it would have been four hundred short.
Right.
Oh, I'm, I'm, there's probably several thousand units that have been approved that have not been built. I mean, we, we can, um, we can tabulate those for you and, and come back to you with where they are, what kind of, uh, unit types they are, um, to show you. Because I think over the last, I'll say, three or four years, we have this same ratio, the number of units actually approved is less than the number of units that are being built because there's, um, I'll call it a backlog of inventory of approved units that got hung up for some reason, um, that the demand wasn't there.
But that would suggest at some point, that that would suggest though, that the number, sort of the backlog units has got to be declining over time.
Hmm. You would think so, but I think it's been pretty. We have a fair amount of older development plans that were not, um, acted on.
Well, maybe they weren't acted on because it's not a place somebody wanted to live. So, uh, that's, that's the side of it.
I would suggest to you, Tower Pearl, that what I'm seeing in the last six months of the marketplace is that there is a huge demand for housing, um, because of the shortage of listings in the Baltimore metropolitan area, not just our county, but city and the surrounding counties. I'm being told yesterday by a Realtor that they listed a house and they had fourteen offers and the house sold for almost fifty thousand dollars more than the original listing price. We're finding ourselves, I believe, in, uh, the kinds of markets that San Francisco and other P places have, um, where there's huge fights over what a house is worth. I think that we've talked for years about affordable housing in Baltimore County as we've become, you know, a somewhat minority county. And I think that, um, we've talked about the, uh, the small amount of new development that's taking place in single-family and even in townhouses. Yes, we've approved projects, but, um, I think you're going to find that the only place that people are going to be able to go to are the surrounding counties to find affordable housing. Um, we do a number of projects in Carroll County in Tawny Town where you can still buy a single-family home for two hundred and seventy-five thousand or three hundred thousand. Um, we're not seeing that in Baltimore County. And I think that if we continue to, you know, um, stunt development at a point, when you look at our county, that much of our housing is over a hundred years old now. Um, when you look at the east side and you look at Pikesville and you look at, uh, other areas that, you know, were developed as they grew out from the city back in the nineteen twenties, thirties and forties, you know, we're going to have an awful lot of older housing stock. Um, that's not going to be what the home buyers and the families want. Are there smaller families? No question about it, but people still, you know, want to have a house and a backyard and a place for their children to play.
Hey, Jeff, I'm, uh, curious, the six hundred and thirty-three dwelling units that were approved last year, how does that compare with previous? Is, what is the trend?
Um, you know? It's, it's, it's a downward trend. If you, you know, start looking back to, um, Great Recession, um, it's been a downward trend since then.
Oh.
I would say substantial down. I mean, I remember the numbers and it was two thousand, it's fifteen hundred units. It's, it's come down.
And what, what happens with that downward trend? Um, you'll get a big multifamily project that gets approved and it'll spike, it'll spike back up based on one or two development projects of those types.
Well, this is, this is. So this is, this is a, um, it's great conversation. My question is, how much of this is a planning issue and how much of this is a true economic development, um, challenge? Right? Because we can issue plans, review and approve plans, but if you don't have a demand, then the developers aren't going to go out and seek additional land or, um, submit additional plans, uh, particularly if we have a number of units that are approved that have not been built. So.
And I have to disagree. I think it's an affordability issue.
Okay.
And when you reduce, when you take two-thirds of the landmass of a county and say it's undevelopable, it, it's simple supply and demand. There's just not large parcels of property to develop inside the early left. Just, they're just not there. I mean.
So, so one of my questions, and I, and I hear you, Todd, and I, and I don't disagree. My question is, with the number of plans that have been approved that have not been acted upon, right, with still a need, a housing need, what is the disconnect between those that have been approved, right, and the need that is out there? Where those, are those, um, plans approved for properties that were to be built at a higher, um, rate? Because we've got a number of multifamily, uh, single-family attached and single-family detached, um, or semi-detached plans that have not been acted upon.
I, I would say that I see is like infill lots and Dundalk, and I, I did a little research on this, and, you know, there isn't huge undeveloped parcel that were planned and not built. That just doesn't, it's, it's onesie twosies, uh, stuff. It's not.
I would, I would suggest to you that you pretty much have to throw the multifamily apartment projects out of the mix. Um, we talked about it during the zoning cycle about building on adjacent to a lot of the, um, Hunt Valley malls and the Foundry rows and other things. There will always be new apartment projects built. Um, there will be some smaller family size that will look at apartments or people that are, um, retiring and selling their homes. But again, homes in Pikesville were built in the forties and fifties, so they're seventy-five and eighty years old, same in Randallstown, um, same one, you know, housing that was built in Dundalk and Middle River were built in the forties, you know, during the war for, um, Bethlehem Steel. Um, the issue you also have, um, you know, is that it takes a good seven or eight years to bring a project to fruition and to start grading and selling lots to builders, to new home builders in Baltimore County. It's gotten a little bit better, but they all, um, like building in the county, but it still takes the same difficult amount of time that it takes in many other counties as well. Um, there really needs to be some way to prioritize it after their plans have been approved to get through the permitting process, and that hasn't gotten better. So that's why you see some of these, um, approved projects that really just haven't moved forward, not that they don't want to, but it just takes that time to go through DEPRIM and to go through all the other approval process after they've been through the planning department. That's what takes the time.
Is that the main reason I asked that question? What is the main reason? Is it because they can't get through the process or because there's a surplus in that area? What, what do you think the main reason is?
I think Johnny, um, Johnny O is, um, working on it. I think he's brought in some good people, but it doesn't happen, you know, in six months or a year that it changes the whole, um, philosophy. But I continue to hear, um, you know, I heard from a builder today that can't get his homeowner's documents and his water and sewer documents approved by the county. Um, you know, that's no negative comment to our planning department. They have a plan, approved the project, you know, three, five years ago. Um, but it's the other departments that just don't seem to be able to move this stuff along to get it to the building phase. Um, even with that said, there is a major shortage of, you know, housing and especially affordable housing in our county. And as we go forward, it's going to get to be much tougher because of the demand, people moving out of the city into our county, into Howard County. Um, you know, um, there is some growth potential in Hartford County along ninety-five, but right now a lot of it's agricultural, um, and they have the same issues from, you know, people that don't want to see development in the green space, so to speak. But a long ninety-five, to me, seems to make some sense, but that's their county and their decision how they want to proceed. Cecil County gets, is right now is probably the hottest county that has some projects with as many as two thousand units being developed by three or four different developers. I would tell you, probably in the six or eight thousand unit range over the next three to five years.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, just, uh, two, two follow-up points. I think, uh, you know, a lot of good points have been made by the board members. Um, one thing that we, you know, as we finish up the zoning process with the county council, we are going to shift gears into, uh, re-looking at redoing the master plan. Uh, part of some of, some of this, these points that you've raised in terms of types of units, age of structure, that should be part of our underlying data set that will help flush out some of these ideas that will be vetted through the master plan. Um, so as we present, uh, start to pull you into that process, we'll be presenting, um, more and more of, you know, base information to help give you a knowledge set that when we bring, uh, components of the master plan, you'll be able to have a better knowledge basis to evaluate those things. Uh, second, right before the board meeting started, uh, Pete and I were in another, uh, meeting, uh, on a project the county is embarking on to re, to upgrade its development review process all the way from permits to how, um, agencies review and share information. So, you know, the county executive has a priority of, of bringing the county forward, um, with technology and engagement with all the stakeholders in that process, uh, just project. Um, we just kicked it off with the consultant, um, and they're looking for, uh, at least the permit phase to be, um, that the per, the, the permits are the, the first phase of that overall land use project. Jeff, Jeff, can I ask?
When they, when that process starts that we take into account, the permit we are to today and, and take a look as a county, uh, into our segregation and how we've segregated the communities, is that, you promise that you'll make that part of your plan?
Yes, we've, we've already committed to the housing advocates through the voluntary compliance agreement that the next master plan will, um, have a, a stronger affordability and, um, that, um, disparity, you know, have policies to try to, uh, overcome those disparities.
Jeff, uh, Scott here. Is there any way, those of us on the board? those of us on the board who are at least are, are perhaps more interested in this could sort of be part of this master planning work? Before it gets to the stage where you're presenting it to us as not quite complete, but far so far along that it's hard to sort of give suggestions or change.
Um.
Yeah, I don't know if there's any way, mechanism to sort of have, get some earlier feedback or earlier discussion.
We have started, Pete and I and the division chiefs have started a, um, a regular scheduled meeting on how to engage stakeholders on the planning board is one of those. Um, we're still trying to switch from our traditional go meet people to how we do this um, virtually and how we can be successful in that. So, um, it is on our minds and we do, we're trying to develop systems to engage those people. Um, so we'll be asking your, for your involvement once we have a, a better picture of how we can do that successfully.
Great, thanks.
All right, I'd like to make a comment on, uh, some of the overcrowding. The history of our county, when people got, when things got too crowded, it was expensive, they moved. In the eighteen hundreds, they went west. Uh, now they're moving to the adjacent areas. They may go north to Pennsylvania. They're going to find a place where property is cheaper, where a living is cheaper. And I think artificial, um, artificial setting up areas where government is controlling on, uh, who lives where is not what our country's about.
So to Wayne, to that point, I would just say one thing. The manner in which we zone properties begins to, tends to have an impact on affordability, right? And where people can live. So, uh, any decisions, many of the decisions that we made going through the CZP process could definitely have an impact on, you know, whether a person is going to move to Haverford or they're going to move into the city to Gilchrist, right? It's just the nature of zone. Um, so, so all of that is government, there's government impact on all of it. It's not natural per se. Uh, we've taken the natural, um, migration of folks kind of out because it's no longer about uh, where necessarily resources are, but it is about affordability of properties and zoning changes affordability, just does. So.
And it's more affordable somewhere else. That's where people have a right to move to.
Yeah, yeah. Um, are, are there any other questions about the, about the, uh, growth report? Because if not, I am prepared to, uh, don't want to curtail. It's great conversation. Uh, but it is now four fifty-five. So if anyone has something pressing, I will leave this open. Anything else? If not, the chair will entertain a motion.
But I, be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board recommends adoption of the two thousand nineteen annual growth report dated June eighteenth, twenty twenty as prepared by the Baltimore County Department of Planning.
You've heard the motion from Miss, um, Haverford. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a rush. I think that that was Mr. Who got there first? Uh, was that Mr. Hartman?
Nope, not I.
God, dude.
Mr. Halupka? Yep, Mr. Halupka. Okay, you've heard the motion. Uh, moved by Ms. Haverford, second by Mr. Halupka. Uh, any questions? Not hearing any. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Both have the same right. Motion carries. Um, we've adopted the annual growth report. I want to thank Mijao and the staff. Uh, very good job. Thank you for fielding those questions as well. Um, a lot of food for thought as we go forward and we start working on the master plan. All right, we've cut down to the home stretch. Um, Mr. Muleburger, are you prepared to present on the June eleventh, twenty twenty, of the Landmarks Preservation Commission?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I am. At the June eleventh, twenty twenty, meeting of the Landmarks Preservation Commission, the LPC voted to issue seven certificates of appropriateness to the following properties. The Cherry Property located at fifty-one twenty-eight South Rolling Road in Relay. The Clank Property located at nine forty-five Oella Avenue. The Rockland Barn and Milk House located at ten two-one-four Falls Road in Rockland. The Cessnick Property located at nine oh-seven Adana Road in Sudbrook Park. The Davenport House, also known as Bellevue Bank Barn, as well as the Barn, Wagon House and Garden House and Setting at twenty-one oh-one Mount Carmel Road in Parkton. The Brooks Property located at thirty-six oh-nine Blackstone Road in Fieldstone. And the Almond Property located at sixty-three Murdoch Road in Rogers Forge.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Muleburger. Last item on our agenda is legislation of interest to the board. Mr. Muleburger, please fill us in on the relevant legislation that's recently passed Baltimore County Council.
Bill thirty-one twenty, uh, the CEB Community Development Block Grant for COVID-nineteen, uh, Fund Emergency Solutions Grant. Uh, for the purpose of amending the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty current expense budget by appropriating to the gifts and grants, uh, special revenue fund. Money is derived from federal funds and made available to the county through the HUD as a result of the COVID-nineteen public health catastrophe. Bill thirty-three twenty, the Annual Budget and Appropriation Ordinance of Baltimore County to adopt the county budget consisting of the current expense budget for the fi- fiscal year ending in June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, the capital budget for the fiscal year ending in June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and the capital improvement program for the fiscal years ending in June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. And to appropriate all funds from the programs for the fiscal year beginning in July first, twenty twenty and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Bill thirty-four dash twenty, the property tax for the purpose of levying and, and imposing a property tax for the use of Baltimore County for the taxable year beginning July first, twenty twenty and ending on the thirtieth day of June, following fixing the rate of county taxation for such taxable year, fixing the rate to be charged for, when property taxes are paid on a semi-annual basis and generally relating to the property tax. Bill thirty-nine dash twenty, operational buildings borrowing ordinance for the purpose of authorizing and empowering Baltimore County to borrow money in a principal amount not exceeding forty-six million dollars for public op- public operations buildings, including but not limited to general health, police, fire, recreation, library, senior center and jail buildings or facilities as necessary or desirable, uh, equipment to be undertaken um, and to provide that the full amount of such borrowing will, shall be submitted to a referendum of the registered voters of Baltimore County. Bill forty dash twenty, Parks Preservations and Greenways Borrowing Ordinance for the purpose of authorizing empowering Baltimore County to borrow money in a principal amount not exceeding thirty-five million for the purpose of parks, preservations and greenways. Bill forty-three dash twenty, agricultural and rural let land preservation borrowing ordinance for the purpose of authorizing empowering Baltimore County to borrow money in a principal amount not exceeding four million for land preservation. Um, and to be submitted in a referendum, uh, for the registered voters of Baltimore County. Bill forty-four dash twenty, the Community Improvement Borrow Project Borrowing Ordinance for the purpose of authorizing and empowering the county to borrow money in a principal amount not exceeding two million five hundred thousand for community improvement projects to be undertaken and to provide that full amount. Um, and such borrowing shall be submitted to a referendum of the registered voters of the county. Bill fifty-two dash twenty, zoning regulations uses as of right, public schools for the purpose of repealing public schools from the list of uses as of right in the RC two and RC four zones, making conforming changes, updating the certain definition and generally relating to uses in the resource conservation zones. Bill fifty-three dash twenty, zoning regulations permitted alternative uses and development proposals adjacent to the MD forty-three overlay district for the purpose of authorizing alternative uses and development proposals on certain density residential and resource conservation zone properties adjacent to Maryland forty-three overlay district under certain conditions and generally relating to uses in the DR and RC zones. And Resolution fifty dash twenty, support for the Main Street Maryland designation, MBHCD for Towson for the purpose of supporting the request by Baltimore County to the Main Street Maryland Program by the Department of Housing and Community Development of Maryland and the local program administration of the Main Street Maryland Affiliate Program in Towson.
Very good. And I know that last one impacts Nancy directly. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm so grateful, so grateful.
Yeah, that's a, that's a special designation. So thank you. All right. Well, we've come to the end of our agenda. Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair, Jeff, could I have a, a moment, please?
Absolutely.
Miles, could you pull up that map from, um, Queen, please? Um, I just re- want to remind you, um, the census twenty twenty is still underway. Um, this is a map showing the response rate. Dark blue is up to eighty percent response. Uh, lighter blue, yellow, lo- much lower response. So, um, please, uh, remind your neighbors, friends, colleagues that the census is still underway and that they should, um, get involved. Uh, it means a lot in terms of uh, representation. And I think that's uh, quite important, the way, um, things are happening now and everybody wants to make sure they're represented equally. Um, federal funding is highly dependent upon that for each person that is not counted. It costs the county or the county loses about eighteen hundred dollars a year. And, uh, for the planning department, we use the census data in almost everything we do. So, um, you know, formulating the basis of information for this upcoming master plan is going to be important. So please, uh, spread the word as you can and thank you.
Jeff, can you do me a favor and share that or send that particular graphic to each member of the board, please?
Good.
Yeah, yes, sir.
That would be great. And, and Jeff, what are they doing about the areas that aren't re- reporting? Are they, because of the, um, uh, pandemic, are they not able to do like, uh, door-to-door like they used to do?
Uh, that, that, they are going to do that is just pushed off. Um, I think three, excuse me, the timeframe has been delayed three months. Um, the state is making an effort to pick, you know, promote it in these areas. Uh, the county has um, hired for outreach people to try to promote it in, in under counted areas. So we're doing everything we can to promote it.
Is the state, are the government giving you extra time to do this because of the?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, the whole census program has been delayed about three months. Um, you know, because of COVID. And, um, you know, things got put on hold. Now they're ramping up again.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention, Jeff.
Uh, Jeff, this is Scott here. Um, to, to piggyback on what Scott was saying, yeah, if you could send the map and any of the other information about, uh, who the outreach people are, et cetera. I mean, I don't know if they're assigned to different parts of the county so that if we've got community groups or organizations that we can put them in touch with.
We'll get, um, their contact information to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
All right. Well, thank you, Jeff. Um, motion to adjourn? Uh, state your name. Mr. Hartman? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Both have the same rate. Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Ms. Wilson was on the second. Thank you. All right.
Bye, y'all.